I'd like to open the closed session meeting of February twelfth, twenty twenty four. It's five P M. Madam Senator Kirk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Garner?
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Here.
Mayor Beaver?
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Pro Tem Venable.
Thank you ma'am. Is there any public comment for closed session?
No public comments.
Thank you. We will now move into closed sessions. Time is still five P M.
Good evening. Welcome to the Regular City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority Meeting of February 12th. The time is 6:01 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order in the memory of UCAIPA Police Detective Jeremiah McKay, murdered 11 years ago today by a coward. And the world is a darker place without Jeremiah, so if we could have, please, a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask that Captain Walker, please lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible. Would they like to be in justice for all?
Thank you, Captain. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan, Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Beaver.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Pro Tem Venable.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to close, or to report on a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. No item to report on the real estate negotiations, on the litigation on closed sessions. Sosa, Vissartis, and the City Council, by consensus, continued the item for discussion to the next City Council meeting, so the full council could be present. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
One item, sir. When we get to it, item number 16, staff is going to recommend that we continue that item to the February 26th meeting. That's at the request of Mayor Pro Tem Venable, who could not be here tonight and would like to participate in that discussion.
Thank you, sir. That moves us to special presentations. Unfortunately, we do not have the Dog of the Month, which I look forward to every meeting. But we will move on to the next special presentation, Recognition of City Leaders Working Towards Health, presented by Dr. Hanson Wong. Doctor?
I'm not going to announce myself because I took an ethics meeting and they told me that I don't have to identify myself. Do you think it's too late after a year of announcing who I am? Oh, well. About a year ago, a little under a year ago, there were two gentlemen from City Hall that decided they want to try and do something to be healthier. So we went ahead, put them on a program, even had the city clerk notarized everything to make sure it was on the up and up, and it ended the end of December and we have a winner. The contestants were our city manager and our city attorney. The winner, and it won't be candy or pizza or anything like that, okay? The winner says 2023 winner, Stephen Graham, Improving Health. So.
Mayor, may I give some brief remarks?
Yes.
About a year ago, the good doctor came up to me and said that he hopes for long life and vitality in the city attorney recently appointed and suggested a health program of losing some weight in a very direct way, which I appreciated. I'm a competitive person. I've found that when competition is involved, I am more motivated. So I elbowed the city manager and said, would you like to enter into a competition? The good doctor purchased a scale, gave it to the city clerk, who proceeded to weigh us after every city council meeting. Sometimes it just depended on how much we sweated who came out ahead. At the end of one year, I was informed that I was victorious. I will be placing this in the city attorney's office here in City Hall, and I do not intend on ever giving it up, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, since you're so fit and you like competition, let's have a foot race, you and I.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. All right. Congratulations to our city attorney on his, on his working towards health. And Dr. Wong, thank you for holding us all accountable for a healthy lifestyle, sir. I really do appreciate that. All right, moving on to the next special presentation. This is regarding the Oriental Fruitfly and associated quarantines. So there's a new pest threat, I'm sorry, there's a new pest threatening crops in our region, including on private properties. The Oriental Fruitfly is spreading and destroying fruits and vegetables. The California Department of Food and Agriculture and the San Bernardino County Agricultural Commissioner have been working to contain and eradicate this pest. Some of these efforts entail removing produce from private properties and has caused some concern. We wanted to invite the California Department of Food and Agriculture and the Ag Commissioner to provide a briefing to help us and the community understand the importance of their efforts. So Kirsten Scala is joining us remotely on behalf of the California Department of Food and Agriculture and will lead the presentation, but I'd also like to recognize Brady Gergovich of San Bernardino Agricultural Commissioner and, I'm sorry, our San Bernardino County Agricultural Commissioner. And thank you for being here. And Ms. Scala, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, City Council of UCAIPA, for having us speak today. We actually have a CDFA representative there in person. Vince, if you're there, feel free to kick off the presentation, beginning with the next slide.
All right. Okay. All right. How's it going?
Sir?
All right. So right now, we have an Oriental Fruitfly quarantine in Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. We also have some additional quarantines, and we're going to talk about that. So the issue is the Oriental Fruitfly in California. So it's an invasive pest that comes from Asia and infests over 300 different fruits and vegetables. And it not just affects the commercial grower, but it also affects the homeowner who has a tree in their backyard. So I don't think anybody really wants to buy in a piece of fruit that has maggots in it. So that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to eradicate this pest so we don't have an ongoing problem. So the Oriental Fruitfly is slightly larger than the housefly. It's more colorful. It's yellow with markings on the wings, and it lays its eggs under the skin of the fruit. So you're not going to really notice if a piece of fruit has maggots inside of it. It's really hard to see. And the maggots, they burrow inside the fruit, they eat the fruit, the fruit will become unpalatable. And then what happens is the fruit will fall off the tree into the ground. The larvae will enter the soil, and you'll have a new generation pop up later. So that's what we're trying to prevent. So currently, it's been found in parts of San Bernardino and Riverside Counties, triggering a quarantine, which is right now 454 square miles, which is a very large quarantine. The quarantine prevents the movement of host material from the properties unless it's been treated in some manner to mitigate the pest risk. So any growers within a quarantine area either have to undergo a pre-harvest bait treatment or some kind of a post-harvest treatment, which is juicing, fumigation, cold treatment. And then residents, again, are urged not to move fruit off your property. Don't give it a And then residents, again, are urged not to move fruit off your property, don't give it away to friends and relatives. The only way we ask you to move the fruit off the property is juice it, can it, freeze it, some kind of onsite processing, which would, again, mitigate the pest risk. So again, we ask them, consume their fruit on the property. Do not compost fruits and vegetables on the property, as what will happen is, as it begins to compost, it'll warm up the fruit, the larvae will enter the soil and they'll pupate and come out as adults. And we also ask that any fruit that falls off the tree or the plant that is removed from the property, double-bagged and put into the, uh, waste facility, not the compost bin, but the waste bin. And then if you enter the US from another country or Hawaii, that you only bring fruits and vegetables that are allowed. Declare what you bring in. Uh, we don't want to bring infested fruit that has any type of fruit fly or other invasive pest. And then for homeowners, buy your nursery plants from a reputable nursery, a licensed nursery. Uh, we ask you not to buy things online. That's a recurring problem for us. We do have people that buy things online, which are prohibited, they could be noxious weeds. They could be fruit from different countries, um, that are infested. We recently found a fruit smuggling ring in San Jose, and they were selling their product online. And again, inspect your garden for invasive pests, and if they have any questions, call CDFA. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Mohammed, he's going to talk about some other issues.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Mohammed Zuberi, uh, and I work for the Department of Food and Agriculture Protection Emergency Projects, and we deploy as a department of, uh, of food and agriculture with, uh, you know, coordination with the, uh, county agricultural commissioners and support from USDA. We deploy traps throughout the state, and we, when we find, when we find, uh, a fly like the Oriental Fruitfly, we deploy more traps to delineate, uh, infestation. And, uh, and so, uh, our approach is to do, um, uh, treatment, pesticide treatment, and the treatment of choice is a male attracted technique. And we use also, uh, bait treatment that's sprayed on, uh, selectively on, uh, on, on trees and shrubs, um, that will, uh, target the, the females and, and immatures. And we also do, uh, fruit removal. And the idea of the fruit removal is to deny the female sites for depositing eggs and to remove eggs and larvae that might have developed in, inside the fruit. And, uh, so, uh, very much what, uh, everything we do, uh, rely entirely on their cooperation, uh, with the, uh, homeowners and residents, and we rely very much on their, uh, coordination and, and, and their help. And so that's what I have.
Okay. So, once again, looking at quarantine projects, they're very costly. It's a concerted effort between the USDA, CDFA, and the local county agricultural commissioners. So recently, the US- USDA announced that they're going to give us a $103.5 million to address the invasive fruit fly quarantines in California and other states that have, um, issues with fruit flies. The USDA has deployed an onsite incident management team to help with planning and logistics of this quarantine. The county agricultural commissioners continue to support the fruit fly project and are providing additional staff, so we really appreciate that. And the growers, packers, nurses are working alongside the commissioners, CDFA, USDA, to comply with the regulations and to ensure that infested produce is not leaving the quarantine area. So when we look at these quarantines, a typical quarantine is about nine months. This quarantine is going to go past nine months just due to the fact we keep finding flies. So right now, we're probably looking at August. We do want to eradicate this, we don't want any recurring problems. That's our, that's our strategy right now, so we're, we're hitting it pretty hard. And that does impact the growers out there, it does impact the nurseries. Some of them are not able to harvest their product, but unfortunately, we need to make those, um, provisions to ensure that, again, we don't have a recurring problem. And then we have growers that are just outside the quarantine boundary. We allow them to conduct some pre-quarantine treatments, which would allow them to save their crop if the quarantine boundaries expanded to include their property. So that's another thing we work with. And we do work very closely with the growers. We work with different growers associations to help implement onsite strategies that not only work, but help benefit the growers and industry out there as best we can. Okay.
Thank you, Vince. Um, again, this is Kirsten, outreach contractor for CDFA. Uh, this effort to eradicate invasive fruit la- fruit flies takes, um, several partnerships, working together at both the federal, state, and local level, as well as industry. Um, and as mentioned by Mohammed, the program really does depend on California residents' cooperation with ag officials, um, working in their community, and, um, so we just want to show that this is, uh, really a group effort. Next slide, please. For San Bernardino County, these are the various resources that residents, um, industry, and others can look to to find more information about the Oriental Fruitfly. We want to reiterate, if residents see any signs or symptoms of the pest or maggots within their fruit or vegetables, please call this free pest hotline at 1-800-491-1899, and CDFA will work with you to have someone come out and inspect your trees or shrubs. And we also have, um, the support of the San Bernardino County Agricultural Commissioner, um, that's Commissioner Gergovich there today. Um, this is, uh, an office number that you may call if you have any questions. And lastly, we have a website. Um, you can find more information at CaliforniaFruitFly.com. That's where you can find all these quarantine maps and any update, updates and information. Next slide, please. As the outreach contractor, we provide many resources to help educate residents about this issue, including, uh, one-pager handouts in book, English and Spanish. We have social media content, videos on YouTube, infographics, and more, uh, that we can provide the city and others to help spread awareness at local events, um, or online. Next slide, please. So we ask, um, that the city helps us to share this content on their various digital platforms. Um, of course, today's city council meeting is, uh, also a great opportunity, and we thank you, um, for, uh, inviting us today. And lastly, we included the pest hotline phone number, uh, and that concludes our presentation. So if you have any questions, um, we'd be happy to take them now.
Is there a season, like, where these, uh, flies will die off more? Are they, are they easily affected by cold, or is it, or do we anticipate in the summer, we're going to see more of an issue?
So what happens is, once the weather cools down, the larvae will burrow into the soil and they'll pupate, and they'll overwinter as a pupae in the soil, and then when it warms up again, they'll, they'll, they'll come out again. So the strategy right now is to try to remove fruit from the heavily infested areas and go on with the ground treatment to kill the larvae in the, in the soil.
Yeah, the, the life cycle of the, of the pest is temperature-driven, so. During the wintertime, things kind of slow down and everything moves, moves kind of slowly. But as the temperature picks up, we expect a little bit of a flare-up if there is anything there in the soil that we, you know, we have to deal with. That's, that's what, how they, that's how the life cycle works.
Is it too early to say whether or not we're winning this war against this fruit fly, or, uh, how, how's it, how's it going so far?
I'm very sorry.
Are we winning?
Are we winning?
We hope we are. Yeah. We won't tell for sure until springtime comes up to see if our eradication strategies, how effective they are. But we're hitting it hard, we're trying to hit all the bases, trying to remove everything that might have larvae or potential of having something emerge. So what happens is, again, the wintertime, they slow down. If they're still out there in the springtime, they'll pop up again. But we'll have enough traps out there to hit the ones that are emerging, to get those before they can mate and lay eggs.
Yeah, with, with this fly, we have very, very good tools, very, very effective tools that have worked for us, not, that worked in California very, very well, and it's worked, worked actually all over, all, all over the world. And, uh, the male attracted, uh, technique is, is very, very effective. The foliage treatment is very effective, and, and the fact that we, we, uh, doing, uh, we've, we've been doing a lot of fruit removal. We, we want out of our way. Typically, we, we do only 100 meter around, uh, fly finds. Uh, now we're going up to half a mile. Uh, so we are putting a lot of resources here, and, and I believe we have a very, very good handle on it.
So there's a lot of different fruit flies out there. If you want to have a particular fruit fly, this is the one you want to have, because this is the easiest one to control and eradicate.
Okay. Council, uh, questions for the presenter?
Have you found, have there been any in Ucaipa? Do you know if there's any sightings?
Found any fruit flies in Ucaipa?
Ucaipa is within quarantine.
Well, what happens is, every time we find a fly, we go four and a half miles out to establish quarantine boundaries. So even though there might not be any flies found directly in Ucaipa, it's within the quarantine itself.
Now, do you, are you going to go and confiscate all the fruit in that four and a half mile radius? No?
No. What we have is, wherever you find a fly, we go a half a mile out from that, we call that the core area. That's the hot zone. And unfortunately, for this particular quarantine, we have a very massive, um, core area. So we're trying to eliminate the problem there, that's why we're taking the fruit from that core area.
Any further questions, uh, of council?
Yeah. So are you taking all the fruit when you find these flies?
No. So what happens is, on a typical quarantine, we will take the fruit from the actual property and maybe the adjacent properties, but this particular quarantine is far beyond anything we've ever had before. So we're being a little more aggressive on this one.
Okay. No more questions? Gentlemen, thank you. Kirsten, thank you for, uh, for this presentation. I know we've gotten, uh, comments about the, um, CDFA trucks, uh, in our, in our city. People saw it and were curious about it, certainly it's something we want to get a hold of. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am. That takes us to our next item, which is public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, public speaker's slips are in the back. Hand it to our city clerk, she'll pass them to me to clear up a misnomer. You have the First Amendment right to speak. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that. There were those who said that I was trying to limit your First Amendment rights. If you'd like to talk about what's happening in Ukraine, you can, you have that right. We have no authority over that, but if you'd like to do that, we can talk about that. I was simply, in the, in the interest of time, trying to stick to what this council has jurisdiction over, but certainly we can talk about our elected president's favorite color, perhaps, or something like that. I'm going to skip real quick around, Kathy Sellers, you were first, but in the interest of, uh, clarity, Dr. Boone wanted to talk about the fruit fly issue, we'll take her first, please. Dr. Boone, then we'll take Kathy Sellers.
On the issue about the fruit fly, just to make sure that there's transparency, I grew up in Mentone and have lived in, essentially, east Mentone on the north bench. And it is my understanding that last year, the, um, people who go around and look for the fruit flies were down, instead of 20 people for our area, they had five. And so that is why this fruit fly got out of hand, because they couldn't, uh, trap and treat as fast as they need to. But just like is typical of California, they now have a million dollars and a thousand people to come out and pick other people's fruit. All right? And if you don't want somebody on your property, they will get a warrant to come on your property. Good luck. All right? So I appreciate the fact that you're letting us know that we can juice them, and I appreciate the fact you're telling us what to do with the rinds and the dropped fruit, to double-bag it and put it in the trash. That will be done. But, um, I want to be, uh, very clear about how this happened in the first place.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kathy Sellers, Mrs. Kathy Sellers, followed by Mr. Lee Keberline?
Kathy Sellers. Common sense is not so common. Our attorney has advised us to end the criticism of City Hall in hopes of resolving our differences and settling the lawsuit that has cost so much in taxpayer dollars and credibility of City Hall. It's apparent the city has no intention of ending this sad chapter in our city by following the grand jury's advice and Judge Sacks's opinion, and that city clerk Anna Sosa and the city council could have avoided incurring costs, and that recall proponents exercising their rights should not have incurred costs in defending themselves. He added, "This seems to be a waste of funds, both public and private." For months, we've been hearing that all the city clerk wanted was a ruling from the court on whether the language on the recall petitions was false and misleading. On January 31st, Judge Sacks made such a ruling, finding that the grounds for the recall were truthful and awarded attorney's fees to proponent Colleen Wong. Faced with that court decision and the grand jury report, the reaction by the city officials is that everyone who disagrees are uninformed, do not understand the facts, and have engaged in criminal conduct. At a meeting with City Manager Mann on February 5th, I asked him what the mindset of the council is, and he replied that they think there was undue influence exerted on the judge and the grand jury. By whom? The city's press release leads one to believe they will file an appeal and drag this ludicrous lawsuit on for months at great cost to all. Chris Mann also commented that he considered filing suit against anyone who has criticized him over the last year for defamation. I believe these comments are inappropriate and threatening. A retired legal scholar who was following this debacle recently sent me a message stating, "There is a state civil rights crime that the DA should be investigating because it appears certain people are intending to violate our rights guaranteed by the Constitution." Civil Code Section 52.1, the BAIN Act, protects people whose rights are interfered with by threats, intimidation, or coercion. Regarding recent statements made by Garner and Duncan on our latest recall petitions, "No, gentlemen, we have not failed to recall you, but have merely attempted to cooperate with the city clerk in an effort to prevent her from filing another writ." Mr. Duncan, your attempt to secure political cover by once again blaming Ray Casey for embezzlement by a City Hall employee does border on defamation. This past Friday, Ray Casey was honored by the International City Managers Association when awarded the Ethical Hero Award in recognition of his dignity, honor, integrity, and demonstration of exceptional ethics while carrying out his duties. On December 18th, a group of citizens responded to Chris Mann's request to meet at City Hall. At one point, I shared my concern that the city is going to get sued because of Bobby Duncan's antics, and we should have been allowed to recall him. Mr. Mann looked at the group and said, "Recall him." "Mr. Duncan, I think you need to have a chat with the city manager you hired. He doesn't seem to have your back."
Mr. Lee Keberline, followed by Mrs. Colleen Wong.
Hello, uh, Lee Keberline, uh, 12300 Fifth Street, Ucaipa, California. Um, yeah, I was just, wanted to address, um, just the, the road issue that we have in Ucaipa. Just for me, my experience driving home from work, um, you know, especially going on the Bryant Street from 38 towards Ucaipa Boulevard, there's obviously, like, lighting issues, you know, and, and, um, it's just, I think there could be better lighting in that area. And then also, from, you know, Bryant Street, um, to where Ucaipa Boulevard is, down towards, basically between, actually, it'd be probably Second Street, or, well, that's hard to say, Third Street to Fourth Street, the lighting is not very good. And I think it, you know, could be better. I don't know the ins and outs on how you guys fix that or not, I mean, you guys probably know a lot more. So I just wanted to put that on your radar, I don't know if anybody else has talked about it or not, but, um, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, sir, when you say, uh, lighting, are you talking about traffic control signals, red, yellow, green? Or are you talking about overall illuminating lighting?
I think overall illuminating light. Also, just the, the reflectors on the road, because there's some parts of the road where there's no, uh, you know, little reflectors where you can see the lines when you're driving and stuff.
Botts, dots.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know the names or the terminology, but I guess, okay, I'll look that up. Yeah, just overall illumination, because if it's raining and stuff like it was a few weeks ago, then, um, you know, it's harder to see, oh, am I in the right lane, you know, or am I, like, in the southern lane? Because there's no, you can't see the lines on the road, basically between. on the road. Basically between, I'd say, third and fourth on Eucapa Boulevard is what I've noticed. That'd be the main thing I noticed. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Pressiato, you got that? Perfect. Mrs. Colleen Wong, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Recently, I had the privilege of appearing before Judge Sacks of the San Bernardino Superior Court. I was one of the proponents, as you know, that signed the recall documents against Matt Garner. Those documents were accepted, and then I received a letter informing me, informing me that because the recall documents contained false and misleading information, those of us who had signed the recall were going to be sued. Shock could not properly describe my attitude upon getting this letter. Anger soon followed dismay, disgust, fear, and the list goes on. It became an ongoing trial. After dealing with the ordeal for months, it ultimately came down to one major issue for me. As an American, am I still allowed to participate in my government? Do I have the freedom of speech to say I disagree with my representative government officials? Do I have the right to recall them if I think they are not representing me? I always thought I did, so I signed the recall, and I hope I still did. So I signed the anti-SLAP lawsuit. It was a SLAP lawsuit they used to file against those of us who signed the recall. The anti-SLAP statute is designed to protect free speech such as that exercised during criticism of government officials. So how did Judge Sacks' rules? The motion was granted against the city of Eucapa, allowing attorney fees to be granted, and finding the grounds for the recall were truthful. Judge Sacks said that "It is the public's First Amendment right to speak on political matters and to discuss the qualifications of officeholders. The anti-SLAP law safeguards these rights against those who seek to stifle criticism, as the city has done." Judge Sacks' final words, as Kathy said before, "The city could have avoided incurring costs. The respondents who are essentially exercising their constitutional rights should not have had to incur costs. And this seems to me to be a waste of funds, both public funds and private funds. Frankly, we can't afford to be doing that in this time of need." I agree. You all may not have liked how you were criticized. Perhaps we should have worded some things differently, but ultimately it is the right, and for that matter, the responsibility of the citizens to participate in our government. Please, this has been adjudicated. Let's put it behind us and work together for the better city and a better city government.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would like this to be put into the record.
Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mr. George Sardison.
Hello again. Uh, Mr. Graham seems to think that anytime there's a public comment, that I miraculously appear. So I'm here. Um, the number one, uh, item I was thinking of is, uh, property, uh, projects. And I think that it should be presented in a non-bias manner. I think that the general plan and the bonus density should be applied, but noted, uh, and presented to you. Obviously, the job of the people, the developers and the entitlement specialists are to get as much as they can. It's their job. And so I think that if you're going to give them more than what's in the bonus densities in the general plan, you should negotiate, whether it's land, money, whatever. But they shouldn't get something for nothing, in my mind. Uh, again, that's just something for you to think about. Um, I was fortunate enough, uh, to sit under the tutelage of, um, Mr. Graham and learn a little bit about ethics. In addition, I went ahead and read some things about committees and, uh, commissions as well as the city council. And so as far as decision making is concerned, I learned basically that whichever one of us is involved, that there's something that comes up, uh, that I need to listen to all the facts, wait, just like a jury, listen to all the facts that are presented, and then at that time, ask questions if needed, make my decision. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong in what I'm saying, Mr. Graham. Um, and I think that it's not our job, if something is going to come up before us, to discuss it ahead of time with the public, to promote it ahead of time, because again, we're going to be making judgment, so we should be hearing it out, and we shouldn't pick a side. The other thing that I, uh, learned is that, um, basically, you know, what things we ought to do, perceptions are important. We ought to listen, be trustworthy, loyal, responsible, respect, fairness, and compassion for the people that we're working for. And again, uh, as a committee, as a city council, we work for the people of Eucapa. Our responsibilities are to make decisions for and behalf of the public. We should be stewards of the taxpayers' resources. So we need to look at where our funding goes. We should make sure that we have a financial report before we do something. Perception matters, and we should have personal and organizational ethics. And I give you your eight seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. George Sardison, followed by Mr. Lloyd Rexed.
George Sardison, 12451 Custer Street. Um, in looking at the duties of a public information officer, I've come across a few definitions that might be helpful for some of the members of the audience. Um, an example that defines the duties is a figure who communicates timely information about their organization, city of Eucapa in this case, with members of the public. One who is responsible for curating and monitoring a positive public image for an organization, city of Eucapa. First, we have the press release taking exception to the county grand jury report that was prepared by 19 citizen volunteers, basically a denial of the entire report and its many conclusions. News Mirror, December 29th, 2023. And now we have the city press release criticizing the Superior Court Judge and his anti-SLAP ruling in the favor of recall proponent Colleen Wang. Now, quote, "The city will be reviewing its legal options and determine the most appropriate course of action." News Mirror, February 9th, 2024. This is nothing but more negative public image for the city and our city council. Regarding closed session item B, Anna Salceda versus George Sardison and friends, et al. legally, um, my suggestion is, in order to get a real good grip on rulings by, by a court, specifically a judge, that besides the proponents like myself and my many friends that have attended all of these court hearings, that Anna Salceda should attend, I suggest a committee of the council attend, just to get a grip. You can't always get a full idea of the ruling by reading the, the transcript. You need to be there to hear the spoken word from a Superior Court Judge. So my request is that on the next hearing date of March 8th, unless there's some other development prior to that time by action of the city council, that those be in attendance, along with myself and my many friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd Rexed.
I want to address my comments to Councilman Duncan. At the council meeting on January 22nd, you made a motion to put a limit on campaign, campaign contributions. On January 24th, I sent you a thank you email for your willingness to demonstrate a degree of sanity in the conversation regarding ordinance 440 campaign contribution limits. In return for what I thought was a gesture of goodwill, I would have welcomed an acknowledgement. I want to make it clear, I mean, really clear. I do not demonstrate kindness for the express purpose of receiving a thank you in return. That's, that's not part of it. I get that. But a response would have been appropriate and welcomed. The fact that I never received a reply from you is inexcusable. And it perfectly illustrates why you, Councilman Duncan, are so disliked in this community. You were very comfortable calling me out publicly from the dais in the council meeting, but you could not privately say, "Thank you." You demonstrate no grace or propriety. You could have taken five seconds-
Mr. Rexed, I'm going to pause your time for just a quick moment and ask that you please address your comments to either the chair or the council as a whole, as per the rules of procedure, sir. Go ahead and continue.
I didn't understand that, but I'll just keep going, and you stop me if you need to.
Certainly.
You could have taken five seconds, hit your reply button on your email, and said two words, "Thank you." You are without excuse. It's incomprehensible that you cannot even in a perfunctory matter exhibit one single degree of goodwill. It leads me to ask the question, "Does power dull all sense of shame?" I think I know the answer. Actually, I don't recall getting the email. Did you send it to bduncan@eucapa.org or .gov? We changed our email, didn't we?
We just switched over our domain name, sir.
We changed our email from bduncan@eucapa.org to bduncan@eucapa.gov. So if you sent it to org, I didn't get it because it would have gone into oblivion. I did not get that email that I can recall.
All right. So we're going to move forward with, uh, the next item of business. However, I do want to, as a point of clarity, um, read an excerpt from the rules of procedure. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the chair or the city council as a whole, not into any individual council member. It's under, uh, rules of procedure 5.1 subsection B. All right. Moving on to the next item, this is consent agenda, items one through 12. Is there any member of the council that'd like to have something removed from consent for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
If I may, I'd like to remove item number nine, please, for separate discussion.
Okay. Item nine for, uh, into department reports, ma'am?
Um, you can just, we can discuss as a pulled consent item.
Okay. We'll do that, uh, do you want to do that prior to the vote for the rest of the consent agenda items?
Yes, if you can, uh, if the motion can be to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item nine.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item while removing item nine for further discussion?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda less item numbers nine.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Garner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and we will go to item number nine. Mr. Landon, current.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. This item number nine revision is for the acceptance of contract work for the 2022-2023 payment rehabilitation contract. After the agenda, uh, with this report was posted last week, it was brought to our attention by our contractor that a clerical error, um, was made in their final documentation requiring a correction to their total contract amount. Uh, we have confirmed, um, that that work, the work associated with that correction has been completed. Um, this correction was therefore provided in revised before, report before you, revising the total contract work from $1,348,273 to $1,366,273, uh, which is approximately $100,000 under the, uh, project construction contract budget originally authorized by city council at the award of that contract. Uh, there is no fiscal impact. It was a result of this, uh, proposed recommendations and revision. And, uh, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the contract work or approve item number nine?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Garner, and I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, 4-0. All right. Moving on to discussion items. This is going to be item number 13. Mr. Ben Matlock, resolution number 2024-02.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I would like to introduce Joe Diegas from Cosmont Companies that will be providing discussion about, um, the efforts related to forming a enhanced infrastructure financing district. This is a follow-up from a number of meetings that and study sessions with city council, as well as a public financing authority that was established by the city council as well. And so this is kind of one of the, the final last steps of the formation process, and I'll turn it over to, to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. Joe Diegas, here with Cosmont. My plan was to do sort of a, maybe like a two or three minute summary, and then I'll have lots of other slides available to the extent you'd like either a more thorough presentation or specific questions that you would like me to address. As Mr. Matlock said, we are nearing culmination of a, of a process that began actually years ago, when the city started looking into one of these funding and financing tools as a way to pay for infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, parks, landscaping, and those sorts of things. This is a, sort of a financing district that's focused in a specific area. It's approximately 1,400 acres within your city, focused on the freeway corridor specific plan and the college village area. This is all work that is being paid for by a grant that the city procured by the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG. So SCAG is, is footing the bill here as a way to try to sort of improve regional transportation and housing production. That's why they're paying for all this. The whole goal here is to establish a new funding tool. It's in no way an increase in taxes or a new tax. It's nothing like that. Property owners, residents, businesses, they see no difference. This is essentially the city allocating a piece of future property taxes that it would receive within a specified area and sort of earmarking it for infrastructure, sort of prioritizing infrastructure as an important need that needs to get funded for, uh, new development to happen. The, uh, most recent conversation that began around this tool, there were some meetings, uh, in June of 2022, and then an action that came before the city council in November. This was the so-called resolution of intention, a non-binding action that says, yeah, we're sort of going down this road with the SCAG funding, seems so far so good. Let's continue to explore. A new entity was formed, as Mr. Matlock alluded to, the so-called Public Financing Authority. That includes three members of the city council and two members of the public. That body has met a few times to sort of move this thing forward in May of 2023. It was the first meeting of that body just to establish some bylaws, sort of rules of governance, and to formally direct the preparation of a plan that would have some more detail on what this was all about. That same body met again in October of 2023. Uh, the meeting in October was for staff and us as your consultant at Cosmont to present a draft plan. What's the boundary? It's that area I mentioned, 1,400 acres, which is freeway corridor specific plan in your college village area. What sorts of things are we thinking about funding? It's those, uh, water, roads, sewer, parks, landscaping, those sorts of things. And what's the, what are the dollars and cents of it? Approximately $96 million on a present value basis, sort of a long-term district, up to 50 years. And again, no new taxes. It's sort of allocating a piece of future taxes. Part of the analysis in that plan is sort of can the city afford it? And the analysis shows, yes. Not only can the city afford it, but by allocating some piece of that future property tax, the growth that can be catalyzed actually has a net positive return to the city general fund. So that is all analysis that's in the report that's attached to this agenda item. Part of the reason for doing this is not just that positive return on investment, those sort of dollars- Part of the reason for doing this is not just that positive return on investment, those sort of dollars and cents of it, but it's just to set up greater priority for things like grants, grants around transportation or housing, especially at the state level. You go down this path, you get more points on your grant applications and you set yourself up. Possibly, it's not a guarantee, but you set yourself up to potentially get a match in dollars from the county of San Bernardino. Again, not a guarantee, just something that becomes possible if you go down this path. If this were to move forward tonight, there are still two additional public hearings of this public financing authority. I should mention that those notices, those meetings are noticed by mail, by newspaper, by website. These were all mailed to landowners, residents, taxing entities affected in those areas. So sort of lots of outreach to let folks know what's going on. We don't really hear any objections. We just get questions because it's obviously a technical subject matter. Usually when we make it clear it's not a new or increased tax, we sort of allay most of the concerns. You know, I think those are the, oh, I should comment on the flexibility of the plan. So this plan, this draft infrastructure financing plan has been prepared to be quite flexible. You're not committed to do a specific project. You have some flexibility to review this over time. It is an amendable plan. So as specific priorities come up, a specific roadway project or a specific parks project, there's the ability to prioritize over time. And even in a worst case scenario, let's say a fiscal emergency were to occur, you also have the ability to just unwind the body, the so-called EIFD if needed. So those are my prepared comments. I do have a number of slides available with things like maps, what's going on elsewhere in the state to the extent that is of interest to you. Otherwise, I'd be very happy to address questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council to staff?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So I noticed that it, on the previous slide, it said the county hasn't agreed to this. I know we had a lot of conversations about this in our meetings, but yeah, county decided not to participate. Is that final?
So the answer is no. Right now, the county has not indicated that they want to participate, but the EIFD itself has set up that if they do want to participate, they can later on, we can wrap them into it. And then essentially they would provide some sort of match. The benefit we have starting it now is because it's based on, the revenue is a tax increment. So if we set the base year today, as future projects come online, including, like one of the projects includes the Patel project at County Line, at Oakland Road in Colorado, those create the increased tax increment. So we're setting it there at this existing level. And then when the county, if they decide to participate, then the benefits are more greater realized through that process.
I should clarify that, that when the county decided not to participate, it was like 2018, separate administration at the county, different circumstance.
Are there other cities that have an EIFD?
There are 26 of these formed. The closest is Rancho, Rancho Cucamonga.
That's right. I think I remember that. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe, seconded by Councilman Garner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, item number 14 presented by Mr. Landon Kern, Wildwood County, I'm sorry, Wildwood Canyon Road and Interstate 10 freeway energy project. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and members of council. It's my pleasure to introduce this item for presentation tonight. It is for our Wildwood Canyon Road and Interstate 10 interchange project. We're excited to provide an opportunity to do a few things. One being provide an update for the overall project. The city's engineering consultant team led by our project manager Mark Hager of HDR Engineering Incorporated will be walking us through the project update this evening in just a moment. And before I introduce Mark, I would like to just mention that I will come back up to join Mark at the podium to discuss the recommendations included with this report for item, for council's consideration, which include essentially, one, the HDR engineering contract amendment for this project as well as the SBCTA funding agreement amendment for this project as well. And so with that, I would like to welcome Mark Hager with HDR to come up and provide us with the project update.
Alright, thanks, Landon, council and mayor. Appreciate the time. Just to kind of demonstrate what our project teams have been working with, with the city staff in delivering. The last time we were here, we were working through the public scoping period, which was our initial public outreach effort. So without any further ado, let's jump right into the slideshow. I'm sure most of you are aware of where this interchange is located, essentially midpoint between Live Oak Canyon Road and County Line Road, essentially in the same proximity as the existing Wildwood Safety Roadside Rest Area. This project was initiated and completed its PID phase, Project Initiation Document, in October 13th, 2021. We moved into P A D, which is where we complete all of the environmental technical studies based on the established footprint for the project. And currently nearly all the tech studies are complete. We're stepping into the final phase of the noise study and will be using those technical studies to generate the draft environmental document, draft project report and modified access report, which is ultimately approved by Federal Highway Administration. The following phases after public circulation of that document would be the plan, specs and estimate, commonly referred to as PSNE, which is the actual design phase where the design drawings are fully generated, followed shortly thereafter by construction bidding and formal construction. There's four alternatives that are considered with the project, with any project. Always the no build is our baseline case. Doing nothing is always an option. Alternative two is the diamond interchange. A skewed diamond is alternative three. And alternative four is a diverging diamond. There's illustrations that will follow and I'll step you through each of those. But just keep in mind with any of them, they're classified as a diamond interchange. So all of the ramps will diverge and converge similarly to what you see at Live Oak Interchange, basically with tightly spaced ramps immediately followed by an overcrossing. So if you were to consider the no build, and I'll orient everybody here. Hillcrest Mobile Estates in the right. Off to the right side of the screen is east out to the desert. Inbound to the valley, San Bernardino, off to the left, so west. And the roadside rest area is nested right here. And all of the alternatives preserve the existing rest area in its place. Again, this is a diamond interchange with a bridge structure across Interstate 10, a bridge structure also across realigned Calamasa Boulevard. And then eastbound off-ramp, eastbound on-ramp, westbound off-ramp and westbound on-ramp. It's a 90-degree crossing, which is the most efficient bridge section to build with an interchange to get across the freeway. With this project, you can see Calamasa Boulevard is ultimately widened to its four lanes and skewed just slightly to the north to make space for the ramp terminals and the westbound ramps. Alternative three is skewing that crossing. As you can see, it shifted slightly to the west and has more of a diagonal appearance rather than the pure transverse crossing of Interstate 10. The ramps essentially remain in a very similar place. The unique difference about this is it just gives us a little bit of better alignment to the valley that runs southwesterly off the bottom of the aerial image here. And then alternative four is referred to as a diverging diamond interchange, DDI. This limits the ramp terminal intersections to two signal phases, eliminates the cross-turning conflicts with cross-traffic left turns, essentially giving a lot more free right turns and working more, in a more efficient manner. We're back to a pure transverse crossing. But in order to make that crossing and for the DDI, diverging diamond to work appropriately, a little bit wider median on Wildwood Canyon Road, but again, similarly to the other two, tight diamond interchange ramps. The benefits really of the interchange come down to establishing multimodal connectivity for local traffic and freeway traffic. For that matter, it provides relief to the local adjacent interchanges, intersections and local roads. Definitely leverages Wildwood Canyon Road as a new entry and exit point in and out of the community. It also accommodates the development both north and south of the freeway, enhances emergency services and first responder access in and out of the community in the event of emergency where ingress or egress would be needed. Also improves the traffic operations of the adjacent interchanges. Not only do you get the benefit of, of a new access point, the project also constructs auxiliary lanes between Live Oak Interchange and future Wildwood Canyon Road and a portion of the auxiliary lanes that would ultimately connect to the planned improved interchange at County Line Road as well. Essentially, this is providing local access to and from the freeway consistent with the freeway corridor specific plan, which we used and worked with the local planning department here at the city with Ben as well as the county of Riverside and county of San Bernardino to look at how that land use is, works in a jointed manner with the freeway corridor specific plan. It also provides an opportunity for housing jobs and is consistent with that general plan and, and keeping those jobs and, and businesses in the community as, as that development occurs. So what's been completed, what's ongoing and what's coming ahead? The blue above the center portion of the screen, we're down here. In the green section, working on the draft project report, the new connection report as I had mentioned. Actually, I think I misspoke earlier and said modified access report. It is a new connection which is required by FHWA and the draft environmental document. About a year from now, we'll be circulating the public document, at which time the public will be able to make formal comment on the, on the document. We will have an open house, similar to what we had with the scoping process. Talk with the residents, the community, the business owners about the alternatives that are recommended and have been studied further. And then ultimately after that, get down to the point where a preferred alternative is selected. And that's accomplished through the project delivery team, which includes the city. SBCTA is a stakeholder and the Caltrans oversight entity, at which time we'll come back to city council, inform you of kind of what we heard from the community through that public outreach process. And final environmental document at that point, once the preferred alternative is formally selected, we'll move forward with the final environmental document, final project report, notice of determination, and then we'll have continued, continuing and ongoing communication, not only with the public, but here at the council. But in, in essence, the project is right now moving, like I said, through that final phase of taking all of the information that we've gathered with the environmental tech studies and engineering studies to produce that public circulated document that'll be available for public review and comment. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark, for that project update. Appreciate that very much. We're about five years in here since we originally kicked off the PID phase back in 2018 and finished that project study report and initiated that new connection report and are well making good progress on our P A D phase here. Large-scale project like this, HDR has been a great partner in leading us through the required Caltrans, Caltrans process along with our other stakeholder in SBCTA. And so before I open it up for some questions with respect to the overall project, I'll walk you through just as quickly as I can here the recommendations associated with this report before you on the screen. It's just a screenshot of those recommendations as you see in your packets. Starting off with the HDR's contract amendment that's proposed will allow for the completion of several studies that are now required by Caltrans that have come about since we initiated that original P A D phase here that we're underway with. These new studies include two bridge studies that will be required for the future eastbound on-ramps, kind of avoiding that rest area that's going to be preserved. That's required for all of the three build alternatives that are being evaluated. In addition to that, there is a new highway safety manual analysis report that Caltrans is requiring comparing the safety features of the current and existing facilities to the future proposed interchange conditions. And then finally, the last required study will be added. What this proposed amendment is a growth study focused on the influences of the interchange and that what that will look like with respect to the land use in the freeway corridor specific plan area and along the I-10 corridor for access to the freeway. The proposed contract amendment with HDR in the amount of $228,623 will allow us to introduce these required Caltrans studies into the contract and get those started and completed with this phase in order to facilitate the completion of this overall P A D phase. It is important to note that the first recommendation with the report essentially summarizes a reallocation of the approved project cost for the project and there will be no net change to the total approved project cost with this phase. And then finally, with respect to the SBCTA funding agreement, the project is partially funded through SBCTA's Valley Freeway Interchange Program. SBCTA provided approximately 50% of the funding through that program, about $250,000 for that initial PID phase to help fund the PSR that was completed back in 2021. And SBCTA, with our current funding agreement we have with them, is providing $625,000 in funding for this phase. The program that, that funds this project will fund up to 50% of eligible costs for all of the phases of work through construction with the maximum total of $10 million that's been identified for this project in that program. And in part due to the limited participation in the program from other cities, SBCTA has recommended transferring an additional $625,000 in funding from future phases into this current P A D phase. And this led to the amendment before you, amendment number one, to the funding agreement between the city and SBCTA, doubling their funding share for this phase to a maximum of $1,250,000. And with the approval of recommendations three and four and subject to SBCTA's final approvals, this funding can therefore be incorporated into the project, the city's CIP budget, and will allow staff to request reimbursements from SBCTA for eligible expenditures that we anticipate to complete this P A D phase. With that, staff is recommending approval of the recommendations one through five as listed in the report. And that concludes our presentation and Mark, myself and Fermín are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Council?
This is the third time that we've seen the four options, right? I remember seeing that like three years ago, then seeing it again like two years ago. And I thought we had, I don't remember exactly, but did we decide which one or we didn't decide, we just kind of looked at them?
That is correct. So the initial phase that we completed, the PID phase with the project study report, did have these three build alternatives identified with the fourth being that no build alternative. This phase that we're in right now is that next further analysis where those alternatives are evaluated and the technical studies that go along with that. And at the conclusion of this phase is when we'll have all that information to make a determination as a group of what the preferred alternative will be. So that initial phase was more of a higher level analysis. We're getting down into the engineering details and we'll be moving, moving toward the selection of a preferred alternative through this process.
Any further questions of staff? I think it's important to note that, if I understand it correctly, this, this is, I mean, the city's been talking about this since, since 2016. But truly, we're talking about 60 years worth of government discussion on the Wildwood County, excuse me, Wildwood Canyon Interchange as it was included in the general plan for the county back in 1964. So, man, the government moves so fast. 60 years later, we're talking about it still. Yeah, I, there was a, there was an item, I think last year, maybe it was in 2022, where somebody had a traffic flow depiction kind of showing the benefit of this interchange and showing how the ingress and egress from this interchange alone will show some pretty nominal improvements for both east and westbound traffic during peak hours. So if that alone, if the city of Ucaip is able to help with traffic congestion by moving forward on a interchange that helps out, you know, millions of people on the busiest stretch of highway in the country, I think we're doing something right. So is there a motion to approve item number 14?
I make a motion that we approve this item.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 15, Amendment to the Agreement for the Joint Exercise of Powers Relative to the San Bernardino Associated Governments. This is Mr. Joe Perdetto.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am not Joe Perdetto. I am Corey Gorham, Management Analyst. The item before you tonight is an amendment to the agreement of the Joint Exercise of Powers relative to a name change and an increase in membership dues for the San Bernardino Council of Governments. We have Monique Ariano, the Chief of Council of Governments and Equity Programs from SBCOG here tonight to present the information.
Nice to meet you. Hi, I'm Monique Ariano from San Bernardino Council of Governments. I appreciate you inviting me out to discuss what we're hoping will be a pretty easy approval. Will it come up? Okay, okay. So just to give a quick background, who is SBCOG? The Council of Governments is a joint powers authority agreement that 24 cities and towns within San Bernardino County and the five county supervisory districts are a part of. And the goal of it is to really identify gaps that can be filled. If one agency is dealing with issues either at the state or federal level, it's likely that a majority of them, or at least some of them, are as well. So our goal is to really fill those gaps for the local jurisdictions that otherwise would need to be filled by hiring staff or hiring consultants. And so the funding that we have currently is through membership dues and supplemental program funds. So why are we important? Again, we fill those gaps for local agencies. We help with dealing with environmental issues. So looking at climate action plans, looking at housing. We're in the process of implementing a housing trust for our region right now. We do a lot of active transportation projects and programs. And we work very closely with our public safety groups, including the fire departments, our dispatch centers, and law enforcement. Projects that we've done, they're numerous. These are a few of them. And I'm going to highlight just one or two as I go through. I'm going to try and get through this pretty quickly. So the first one that we've done over the last five years is our Emergency Communication Nurse System. We worked with their dispatch center, Confire, which covers 85% of the geographical area of San Bernardino County. And the goal of it was for them to implement a program where 911 calls are assessed to determine the type of, I think they call it the level of severity. Essentially, is it an emergency or is it not? If it's an emergency, it goes through the regular protocols. They determine what needs to be sent out. And if it's not, then they send the call to a nurse line. And the nurse provides the correct level of care. So does this person need a doctor's appointment? Does this person need a refill on their prescription? The nurse will help them get through that. It's like a concierge service for the agencies that are under Confire. Confire is currently working with the other dispatch groups. I know they're working with Ontario to see if they can expand it to Ontario. I believe Barstow is on the list and this area. But this area is covered by Calfire, which is a state agency. So it's a little bit more complicated, but I know they're working on it. But the results essentially are a decrease in dispatched ambulances, which allows more ambulances to be available for actual emergencies. And again, they provide low acuity patients to the correct point of care. And so far, there have been no negative patient outcomes. And it's been implemented since COVID back in 2020. So it's going on four years now. These are the statistics that we have. The capacity was limited due to the staffing. As of January, I believe, they are now at full capacity. So these percentages might change, but likely, they're saying that they're probably going to stay relatively close to what we see here. We also work with a few partners on an inland regional energy network. This is a program that is funded through the PUC and it is paid for by ratepayers. There's a percentage that comes off the top of ratepayers that pay for SoCal Gas and Edison. And what they do is provide funding for implementing public sector programs, workforce education and training codes and standards to help address energy efficiency and equitable access to clean energy across our region. We're currently working on a smart county master plan, which is essentially a roadmap for improving our region's technical and communications abilities across jurisdictional boundaries. And the goal of this is to really address growing technical needs, equitable resource of distribution. So how can we make sure that everybody is brought up to a level that they ought to be? To share information, break down silos, and then to serve the county and all the jurisdictions. As a part of this plan, we completed an early action plan back in July where we identified really that low hanging fruit. We identified projects in every subregion of the county. A lot of them have to do with, we're looking at broadband access. We looked at smart intersections and corridors. We looked at emergency services again to really kind of help make better that ability to get to the places that need help. We also looked at zero emission vehicle infrastructure, so hydrogen and electric car charging. So this is a really kind of a map of those areas that we pinpoint in. We also provide grant assistance for our member agencies. So we do research and we give information to our member agencies about what grants are available, what they can receive. We write grants on behalf of our member agencies. And since 2018, we've been able to bring in 14, I'm sorry, $46 million to the region and $19 million specifically since July. There's quite a few projects. Examples are listed here, but I'm going to focus on REAP because they really provided us an opportunity to provide help within your jurisdictions for things like housing elements, site inventories, toolkits that planners can use to implement as you upgrade your, or upgrade, I guess, update your general plans. And then back to REAP 2.0, which was just awarded last year. These are the programs that we were able to receive funding under. The only caveat here is that they are very vulnerable to the governor's revision of the budget. So this is kind of in a holding pattern. But these are the funds that we were able to secure through the award. Like I said, REAP 2.0 is, we just don't know how that's going to look after the new budget. So I presented this information to our board back in July. And I also presented them with an outlook of what the budget is. We expended, at the board's direction, the supplemental fund sources that went along with the work plan to implement these programs, which was the HERO-PACE program fund balance. I'm sure if anybody was able to get some kind of an energy efficiency improvement on their home over the last 15 years, it might have been done through HERO or PACE. So we administered that program and we had that $1.5 million fund balance essentially that we use to implement these programs. Those dollars are expended. And the other supplemental fund that we have as well, REAP, is a little up in the air at this point. So by 26, 27, we are looking at a deficit because our main fund source is going to be member agency dues. And the member agency dues are not enough to sustain even the current level of staffing and contracts. So why are these changes important? I kind of went through what it is, the benefit is that we see as far as projects and programs. But when I presented that information to the board back in July, they saw the value in these projects and programs and the value in us working together as a region. So they established an ad hoc to look at different options for how we can not only be sustainable, but actually increase the capacity because they like what they saw and they'd like to see if we can do more. So through that ad hoc process, we analyzed our sister agencies, WRCOG, CVAG, and San Gabriel Valley COG, and really kind of identified what their budget administration looks like. And the average between those three is about $3 million. And that's compared to our spending administratively, which is about $658,000. So based on that, they identified a dollar amount, which is 1.5 million for an annual COG budget, which would be allocated to the jurisdictions. And the assessments would need to be adjusted because they didn't like how they're set up currently. And I'm going to get into that right now. So currently, Ucaipa's dues are $16,000 and our proposed dues will be $33,000 for this agency. But the existing manner in which we assess the member dues is 50% population and 50% assessed valuation. And that's common across COGS. And then we did two flat rate increases in 2016 and 2022. So what the ad hoc recommended to the board is that we change that from 50% population and assessed valuation to 50% population and actual general fund revenues that the cities receive. So that is the recommendation that we brought to the board and they approved it. So based on that, we will be updating our joint powers authority, which is the amendment that's attached to this item because the JPA establishes the SEP method. And we're going to be pulling that and making it policy driven so that it's a little bit more flexible for the board as issues come up. And then there will also be a cost increase on an annual basis. So again, the gap filling, this is just kind of a look at what options the city would have. So we, again, current dues are 16,000, proposed dues are 13, I'm sorry, 33. If the city were to go and find a staff member, an unburdened mid-range planner is about 84,000. That's the average cost or salary really for a planner. And then if we look at average consultant costs for one particular year, at least based on what I had, it's about $100,000 for a consultant budget. So based on that, the proposed dues provide that economic benefit for the city. So the 1.5 million, we would be breaking into three areas, essentially existing staff, adding new staff and then a consulting team. We would staff up from one, basically me, and then one third of somebody else, to three full-time staff members. And we would be handling project management, liaison, advocacy for the region. And then we definitely need a grant writer and coordinator because we do want to bring more funds into this region. And then this is a pie chart of how the cost is allocated among the other jurisdictions. So the board was very interested in the most equitable distribution. So you can kind of see that if you split the pie in half, five of the agencies are covering half of the cost. And the other half is split between the remaining 20. And let's see, there's Ucaipa right there. And then through the ad hoc, what are you getting for your dollars? Through the ad hoc process, we identified projects and programs that other councils of governments implement. And we worked with them to figure out whether this might be something that they would want to move forward. We don't have a work plan yet because we need to establish that sustainable funding so we can plan. But essentially, these are the different types of programs that we can move forward and then obviously others that the ad hoc would potentially bring up. And then we split it in between, you know, the staff time, the consultant time that we had proposed. And through the ad hoc process, we had Supervisor Hagman and Supervisor Armanderas in those discussions. And they're very interested in potentially sharing staff, county staff, which is a huge benefit for a lot of the projects that we would need their cooperation on. So with that, the timeline is January. The board approved our motion. So the amendments need to be approved by all of the member agencies by April 30. And the new dues structure would begin on July 1. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Councilman Duncan?
Well, I voted yes on this at the SBCTA meeting. I had a, I had a lot of questions about it as I learned about it. But basically, these fees are being paid to this organization, SBCOG, in order for us to be a partaker or a benefit from the services that they're providing in the county. And I move approval for sure.
You said earlier that the dues would go from 16,000 to 33,000 and change. And then you made a comment about a 2% cost increase. So each year, that 33,000, that's going to go up 2%?
2% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less.
Thank you.
No questions? There's a motion on the table by Councilman Duncan for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on the motion carries four zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 16 was continued to the next meeting at the request of our mayor pro temp. But we will take a vote as our motion to continue item number 16 to the next meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Garner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number 17, 2024 Membership on Council Ad Hoc and Standing Committees. This is by our city clerk. Name?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the city council's annual review of current memberships on the various city council, ad hoc, and standing committees. Tonight, we're asking that you review the attachment, the 2024 roster, and advise staff if there are any changes. If the city council will recall back on November 27, 2023, the city council adopted Resolution Number 2023-46, approving general rules and procedures for the conduct of commissions and committees in Ucaipa and reestablishing city council committees, committee functions, and setting their meeting dates and times. When you adopted this resolution, we restructured some of the committees. Some of the committees went from standing to ad hoc. So with that adoption of the resolution, we also created a Community Activity Grant Application Review Committee, the ad hoc committee. So tonight, we're asking that the city council appoint two members to that ad hoc. We also have a position available on the Public Arts Ad Hoc. And we're also asking that the city council discuss whether or not you would like to have a non-voting council member to serve as the liaison for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So if the city council can turn to page...
239?
Yes.
239.
239. That's going to be the 2024 committee's roster. If there are no changes to the current roster as is, then we can move on to the appointments of the Community Activity Grant and the Public Arts Committee Ad Hoc.
I see no change that's glaring in my face. If anybody wants to change anything before we start talking about the vacancies?
Same with me, I'm good with it.
Matt?
I'm good.
I can be on the Community Activity Grant Application Review. I'd like to throw my name in half for that one. We're voting on these, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd be interested as well.
All right, do we, it sounds like there's a motion, at least. Second the motion then for myself to be a member. And are these alternates or there's two members on this?
Two members, it's an ad hoc.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations to us, four zero. And who would like to join me on the Public Arts Committee?
I'd be interested.
I'll second. You two gentlemen, are you okay with John doing it?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero. What was the next one? You said there's another?
Yes, so we have the EDAC. That one was completely restructured. And so the resolution calls for, it's a nine-member committee, but the resolution calls for the council to decide whether you would like a council, a non-voting council member to serve as a liaison. So it's not required, but it is an option.
I'd like to do that. I was the liaison, I was, yes, I was the council liaison to the last EDAC. So I'd like to see the new EDAC and how it's structured. If that's all right with you, John?
All right.
I'm good with that.
It sounds like a second then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number 18, Library Grant Update, Mr. Joe Perdetto. Got some good news for us, sir, sir?
I believe so. Mayor and Honorable Counsel Joe Perdetto, Director of Governmental Affairs. Thank you to Corey for stepping in for me. And I apologize in advance, I am recovering from a bit of a cold. But this item is so important that I wanted to be here, so I was saving my energy for this. So if I seem a little less sharp, I blame that on the cold medicine. Any other time, I have no excuse. So I'm going to walk through for the council, but also for the city and the community's background, the history of the project, just to kind of bring some context. This project, we can track back at least to 2001 when the county did a library facilities master plan. In that, they projected 20 years down the road what the population trends looked like and what kind of facility would be needed to fill that need. So they projected that in 2001, we would be at about a 60,000 population in 2021. Today, we're at about 55,000. That report recommended a 25,000 square foot library. In 2010, the city did its own needs assessment. In that assessment, they looked at various usage of the facility, population size... In that assessment, they looked at various usage of the facility, population size, and determined the city really should have between twenty thousand and thirty thousand square feet. That reinforced the county's finding. So in June, the state legislature of twenty-one, the state legislature was flush with cash and it funded a lot of grants. And we just heard about REAP being on the chopping block and there's been a lot of grant programs. Well, this is one of them. They allocated four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars to fund library construction. Now, by this time, the library has more than a hundred and fifty thousand visitors a year. That's visits, not individual visitors, but that's visits. Its size, its layout, its condition no longer is sufficient for that volume of usage. So the city looked at this as an opportunity to apply for a big grant to help replace that facility. So in March of twenty-two, after conversations with the city and the school district, the city went ahead and put together a proposal for a new twenty-five thousand square foot library, asking for a nine million dollar matching grant. By the time of submission, that proposal had evolved to include a project on school district property adjacent to the high school, just to the east, the old Sizzler lot, which would help the city not only have land on which to build it, but also serve the Dunlap area, which is a disadvantaged part of our community, that helped boost the score of the grant. Also, the plan evolved to include some teen center and some space for the school district to use for after-school education and other office space, study space. However, in the grant application, there was no specified way how we were going to meet that nine million dollar match. Now, that was an optional component, but I do want to point out that when we applied, we did not provide a source of revenue for that nine million dollar match. And on October twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, the city learned that we were going to receive that grant. So that was announced with much fanfare and it got the community excited because, well, the city needs a new library. And, you know, people liked the idea of getting it, they want it, and really, it's warranted. In December twenty twenty-two, then-city manager Ray Casey wrote a letter to the state confirming the availability of the nine million dollar matching funds, but again, did not source the, where that money was coming from. In January twenty twenty-three, Casey brought an item to the city council to kind of update on the project and to provide a proposed source of funding. That looked like this. The city would contribute a million dollars from the general fund. The city and the county would participate in an EIFD, which you just learned a little bit about earlier. The county would contribute two million dollars cash. And the school district would contribute two million dollars via RDA pass-through funding. And that would be a nine million dollar match. In March twenty twenty-three, that's actually when I started and I learned about the project. Our grants coordinator at the time, Shane Masood, actually came to me and told me about this grant. And I thought this was a really cool opportunity. And as he started explaining more to me, I thought, wow, this is really great. And I asked, so how do we match the money? And he said, well, there's a vague plan, some ideas, but we don't have a solid contribution yet. So one of those ideas was the EIFD. So staff started going ahead to investigate the steps to start that because that's going to require the county's contribution and participation to get the maximum revenue out of that. Otherwise, it would just be the city's money going to the project. So together, it would be a joint use. We'd actually be getting money from the county to help fund this. So as we got that going, in April of twenty twenty-three, we met with the school district to discuss the project. We learned at that time that the RDA pass-through money was not available for the library. They actually had that programmed for sports fields improvements and turf replacement. So that's two million dollars from that nine million match that is no longer existing. In May twenty twenty-three, we met with county CEO Leonard Hernandez. And at that time, he informed us that the county was not inclined to participate in an EIFD. So that jeopardized that revenue. But he did offer six million dollars cash instead, which was excellent. And then in June of twenty twenty-three, staff met with representatives from San Manuel. We applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant. They were very interested, but they also said, hey, this looks like a really great project. And if it's more certain to come to fruition, we'd actually be inclined to come in at a higher level. But we want to make sure we're participating in a sure bet. So we held off on that for a little while. Unfortunately, in August, Leonard Hernandez resigned. And that halted conversations with the county for a little while because he was the lead negotiator in this. In the fall of twenty-three, kind of seeing that things were not going the way we were hoping, we started, and staff started investigating alternative methods of delivering a library. We looked at Riverside County that used a private-public partnership model to deliver three brand-new libraries. That included some form of financing in the form of leasebacks, where the county leased property on a long-term basis to a developer that then paid rent, built a big library and then leased it back to the county over a thirty-year term, at which point they would sell the library to the county for a dollar. So it was a good way for the county to have no upfront costs and to build into the cost of the project, time and delivery guarantees along with project management. Those are huge components. So that got staff excited at the prospect of being able to partner with an agency that is skill and experience and demonstrated a track record in delivering big projects on time and on budget. So in December of twenty-three, we met, we started negotiations, talks with the county again and the school district, and we brought that idea to them. At that time, the county said that that six million dollars that Hernandez had suggested he could contribute. They didn't know exactly where it was coming from, but they promised to sharpen their pencils and come back. Fortunately, at the end of the month, they came back and said that they could do four million instead of six. So, you know, it still kind of helped set the project on a good path. But we still now had an extra two million dollar gap. So that brings us to last month, which was a breakout month for the library. I'm going to tell you some good news, I'm going to tell you some bad news. The good news, we got the match secured. And we also got state support for potentially altering the project to fit our budget. And I'll explain why that's important in a second. So here is a look at the new committed funding. In January, finance staff combed through all of our accounts and funds to look for ways that we can contribute a little bit more. And they found a couple of capital projects where we could reallocate money because those projects are so far down the line or maybe even may not come to fruition. So that bumped up with the city can contribute to three million. We take the county's four million, that left us two million short. So we approached Supervisor Rao and we asked her for help to bridge the two million dollar gap. And she really wanted to see this project move forward. And she was brainstorming on ways to help and suggested that she could potentially come in with an extra million dollars from the county, but wanted to make it contingent on San Manuel coming in and matching that with a million dollars. And she offered to broker a meeting with the tribe to make that ask. So we met with the tribe and it was three or four days later, we got notice that they were going ahead and going to match the million dollars. So that is our current matching funding formula. And the school district is still planning to contribute land for construction. So I want to say a special thank you to our partners. And special thanks to Supervisor Rao and San Manuel for coming in and helping bridge the gap and also the generous support of the county administrative office and the school district for working with us on this. So we have now what we call a minimal viable project. We can move forward to the library. We'll move forward to some of the challenges, though, and explain how we're trying to navigate these. Inflation is a big challenge. The current estimate for building a library is about a thousand bucks a square foot. That's more than we had budgeted for originally. So if we were to build a twenty-five thousand square foot library, we're looking at twenty-five million dollars. That would require an extra seven million on top of what we've already secured. And that's very, it's going to be a difficult threshold to meet. So instead of trying to reach that threshold, we've contemplated potentially doing some value engineering, reducing the scope to just delivering a new, modern library that will still meet our needs. In fact, the county librarian has indicated that based on modern design principles, an eighteen thousand square foot library would still be able to serve the needs of our community. Time. The grant award is, has a timeline for project delivery of March twenty twenty-six. And these projects can take years. So with inflation and the construction deadline looming, we have to move very quickly. We asked the state if they would be open to reducing the scope of the project to eighteen thousand square feet. And our grant coordinator suggested support for that. As long as it meets the needs of the community, they would be supportive. And we also asked about a potential time extension. And again, they indicated willingness to work with us as long as we're making proactive steps, productive steps towards delivering a project. So that's good news, but it's still a challenge. And then the biggest challenge is after we found that we've met this nine million dollar match, we have a viable project. With the tribe, let us know that we're going to get their funding. We find out that the state, the governor is proposing to potentially claw back some of these grant funds, which then throws the project into a state of uncertainty. So here is a quick analysis of the issues we're dealing with. Inflation, every day we wait drives project costs up. Time, we have less of it. Every day we're not moving, the project costs increase. And also, the likelihood of getting an extension decreases because the state wants to see action. Meanwhile, we have uncertainty in the funding. So we're presented a situation in which we have to ask ourselves, do we wait till the state finalizes the budget and risk not having a project, but having not spent staff time in that interim time? Or do we proceed as if we have the funding, knowing that there's uncertainty, but also creating that case for the state that we have a viable project and we are working towards it, which strengthens our defense for the need for the money? So that's kind of the situation we found ourselves in with very little time to devise a strategy. But in talks with the city manager and our team, all of our partners are in support of taking a strategy in which we proceed as normal and just continue to move forward with the expectation that we have the money. And if the state pulls the money, that's out of our control. But what is in our control is the ability to move forward and continue to move towards a viable project. Both the county and the school district have bought in on that strategy to move forward. So there's a few big steps to construction here. We've met the secured the funding. Right now, we're negotiating on the partnership agreements. So some of the things that will be coming to you in the near future, tonight is ratification of one funding agreement from the county for Supervisor Rao. The Board of Supervisors still has to approve that later this month. We have another agreement coming from the tribe very shortly, maybe even at the next council meeting, to accept that million dollars. And then the four million from the administrative office will be coming in the future as well, along with a negotiated project partner agreement on how the project will operate. Currently, the city owns the library, the county operates it, and we pay maintenance. In this new arrangement, the school district will own the land, the city will own the building, pay the maintenance, and the county will operate it. So it does make things a little bit more difficult because of the actual underlying land component. As we work on that, we have to progress very quickly into the design and construction phases. So as I had mentioned, staff had been looking at a private-public partnership model. That model is very effective, but we have cash. So we don't need to take on debt service. So financing is not necessarily something that we need to consider in how we bring this to fruition. So instead, we're looking at some sort of potential design-build agreement with a developer that we would like to put into the contract time and cost delivery guarantees, much like Riverside County did. So the developer has that in their package somehow. So, you know, we pay for it one way or the other, but we don't see it directly. But the good news is with the amount of time we have and the amount of money in our project budget, we don't have a lot of wiggle room for time delays or cost overruns. So whatever RFP we go out, we'll be looking for developer who would be assuming the risk for delivering a project on time and on budget. To go design-build, currently, staff is working with the city attorney's office to review our internal policies and ordinances, just to make sure that we comply with state law that gives us the permission to do a design-build arrangement. Because at present, we're not able to do that. So that is some change that we'll also have to work through as we get ready for that part of the process. So the quick summary is the good news is we have worked through a saga that looked like at times, and there was rumors that the project was dead. And certainly from the outside, it could have looked that way, but staff never stopped working on this. We were always moving forward, looking for steps, staying persistent. That's paid off. We've met our match requirements. Our partners are committed. The state is flexible in wanting to work with us. We just have to demonstrate some proactive steps. And our strategy is to continue to proceed and to fight to protect project funding, which is why one of the other motions tonight is to send a letter to the governor asking that he not pull this funding from cities. Our lobbyist has indicated that there is legislative pushback from the assembly and the senate on the provision to remove library funding and some other grant funding. Partly self-motivated because a lot of these legislators actually participated in the award announcements and some of the promotion, and they don't want to look bad by helping to announce projects that are then defunded in closing the state deficit. So there is some support for preserving this funding, so that gives us some hope. And we can help advocate with other cities in protecting this funding and moving forward. So that is an update of where we are with the library. We just want to bring you and the community up to speed that the city and the staff has always been working, even though it may not have been seen in the public. And we're seeing the results of that coming to fruition. We have a viable project, there is some uncertainty, but we have a plan to move forward. And we want to, we're at a point now where we can move forward. And if the state pulls the funding, that's out of our control. But everything that's within our control, we have handled and managed well and wanted to be transparent and accountable to you and the community. So with that, help answer any questions or if the city manager has anything to add.
Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
I just want to compliment staff. And this has been a tremendous lift for Mr. Perdetto, our assistant city manager Jennifer Crawford, our finance director Phil White, management analyst Corey Goram. I mean, it has been really almost a year of trying to put the puzzle pieces together to make this happen. And I'd like to give a really special thanks to our supervisor, Don Rao, who, when it looked like we had turned over every stone to try to find this funding and we were still coming up two million dollars short. Over a conversation with her, she indicated this project was... with her, she indicated this project was important to her, and she stepped up to the plate and really helped us bridge that $2 million gap to get there. So, big thanks to her. But I mean, this is exciting. I think, I think we can, we can say at this point that as long as the state doesn't claw back the grant funding, that we can have a project. And be excited to be able to deliver that to the community.
Thank you. Before we move on to discussion and vote, I want to echo your sentiments to all staff that you mentioned, as well as, where's Ryan? Is Mr. Miller's? Ryan accompanied us down there to meet with the tribe in November, really forge a partnership with the tribal council that should have been done a long time ago. And so, all the work by all involved, Joe, Chris, Phil, Jennifer, Fermin, we have a, we have a rock star cast here that helps us out and gets the city of Ucaipa where it's at. To that point, the army of community members who come here to speak on the matter during city council meetings, Amy Simmons is one that pops in my head, and I know there's so much more, is impressive to say the least, to, to, to see that kind of support for such a altogether deserving project. So, outstanding work to all, to all who had their hands on this. And I couldn't agree more to our supervisor. I'm not sure if you're listening, or if Mr. Ward is still here, but hugely thankful for that. And to the tribe, again, we truly are such a small valley that it only makes sense for us all to work together to, to help each other out. So, from, from my seat, thank you to all involved. Is there any, is there any questions of council to staff?
Well, I, I was gonna compliment staff, but you've already done that. I was really depressed about this whole thing, because I really, really thought that we needed, and I know we need a library, but I wasn't sure that we would get here. And I would say that on behalf of the public, and I think it's time that we applaud city staff for doing a possible job. And I know we're not out of the woods yet, but good job, man. Way to go. I, I'm very proud of you all. And I said, I thought we, I didn't think we had a chance, and it looks like we might. And so I'm very happy about that.
I don't think I can add to, you guys have it covered, so I agree with you.
Yeah, I got a couple of concerns with the library. First of all, the costs. You said there's, there possibly a general contractor that can guarantee the costs at 18,000 feet at a thousand bucks a foot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as of, as of today, material prices are going up, and it looks like it's gonna go up about 10% to 15% a year. Union dues, union labor, 5% a year. How are they gonna guarantee that price for this library?
I don't know all the mechanisms of how they guarantee it, and there is a risk that by the time there is an RFP submitted, that even the per-square-foot price goes up. So, it might cut into the size of the library if we can't find other funding. But that is a risk, which is why time is of the essence.
It's a big risk. Yeah. Second thing, what's this gonna do with other projects? Is this going to push other projects out? And if so, what projects are they?
Well, I, I will, I'll speak, and then I'll let Fermin or someone correct, but my understanding is that $2 million is from projects that were off years, in the, years off anyway, or may not come to fruition at all. So, a low risk in high priority projects being delayed.
Yeah, so we did review some of the, our, well, our list of 40-plus capital improvement program projects, and looking at those that are grant-funded and have other agreements attached to it. So, work with our finance department to look at those projects that are, that could we, that we could consider less of a priority, and perhaps complete those in future years as opposed to now. So we are working through that process also as we put together the draft budget, our operating budget, and our capital improvement program budget for next fiscal year.
Okay.
And one, one thing I would add to that is, yes, Fermin's crew is going through that exercise of prioritizing. As we looked at this project, the city, we're, we've got a budget situation that we're working through, but we're still operating, we're still acting as a city, and we are not putting ourselves in financial peril to put these things together, which is, Joe, Joe stated it perfectly, but, but putting all this stuff together was, it was quite a lift, because there's so many different moving parts. And so the city's piece of that lift is secure. We have ways to fund it, that we've got available cash. But if we come back, with the EIFD works out, and the county participates, we can backfill with that. We can look at how we're using diff money. So we still have options that we're working through and how it all comes together. We don't have that detail, but we do know that we do have that funding intact. We have painted that funding for this project, so it's secure in that regard. But if we get better news along the way, we can backfill with, with that as it comes.
Yeah, that's just a concern of mine, because I just don't see how you can stick with 18, or $18 million when prices are going up. I just, I just don't see it, unless you have someone that can guarantee it. I mean, I'm for this library. I'd like to see it go through, but that's just a concern of mine. I don't want to start building this thing, and then all of a sudden, we got, oh, $10 million we're gonna pay. That's the problem I got.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's happened in projects in the past, and we do not want to repeat that.
YPAC, yeah.
There you go. And so, we don't, we don't want a repeat of that. We have funding of $18 million. $18 million is a magic number from a construction side, because it's, it's a match, it maximizes the grant. And so, we, we have to have $18 million of funding to have a project, and so that's what's secured. The 18,000 square feet is, as we were going through this process, $1,000 a square foot was what was earmarked as, that's the cost. As Joe pointed out, we were working with a vendor that, or a company that was able to do a price guarantee and a time guarantee. And so, wrapping all of those things in, those are, those are pretty significant, because as you know, midstreaming a project, it's tough to guarantee price on that.
Oh, yeah.
How do you even do that? And so, my, what I would think would be, they're building in a buffer on the front end to guarantee the number, and we haven't gone out to bid yet, we're going to, but if that number comes back at 18,000 square feet is a $20 million project, then we've got to go back to the drawing board to say, do we have $20 million of funding, or are we gonna downsize it further? What are we gonna do? But at this point, the way we're mapping it out, best, best, based on the information we have, it's $1,000 a square foot, that's what we're working towards, and we've got $18 million of funding.
When did you get that estimate of $1,000 a square foot?
That was a few months, a few months back, working with CFP3. That was their, their ballpark based on, and they're in the market now.
So the, the company we talked to just finished a bid for a library, I think it was in Riverside, that the bid came in at $1,000 a square foot, and this was just a couple of months ago. So it's, that's the most recent estimate we could find.
What library is that?
I don't know exactly which library, but I think it was in the city of Riverside.
Well, I, I also did a library in Riverside off of, was it Mission? And they were over budget by 50%. So it concerns me. I just don't want to see us get hurt, that's all.
That is a real risk. Yeah.
Part of going, the procurement process is that price guarantee, and so that is something that the city, we haven't done that before. We didn't do it with the YPAC, but that's something that is important in this case, because we don't have a contingency plan at this point. We've got our $18 million of funding, and that's, that's what's secured, and that's what's moving the project forward. So, we're going into this eyes wide open with, we don't want overruns in this project.
Maybe we could do a car wash. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there a motion for item number 18?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe.
Are we receiving part of it and ratifying and?
So, receiving update on the project, ratify funding agreement between the city manager to accept the funding not to exceed $1 million, and authorize the sending of a letter to our awesome governor to oppose the drawing, the clawback of library grant funds.
I'll second.
That was a motion by Councilman Thorpe, second by Councilman Duncan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move on to item number 19. This is a public hearing. It will open the public hearing at 8:01 PM. Prioritization of Program Year 2024-2025 Community Development Block Grant Projects. This is going to be Corey Graham as our presenter.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Corey Gorham, Management Analyst for the city. The item before you tonight is the prioritization of projects for the 2024-25 Community Development Block Grant Funding Program, also known as CDBG. This public hearing is conducted annually with the purpose of seeking direction from council relative to the funding for eligible proposals. As background, the CDBG program, administered by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, provides financial resources to states, cities, and counties for the purpose of funding construction projects and public service programs that principally benefit low-to-moderate-income individuals. Through a cooperative agreement with the county of San Bernardino, Ucaipa receives a formula share of the county's allocation, which is calculated and based on population size, poverty level, and overcrowded housing counts. For a project or program to be eligible for consideration, the city and interested nonprofit organizations must submit an application to the county for approval. In January of this year, the county notified the city that the grant amount for next program year, which will start in July, will be approximately $235,637. As has been done in prior years, we have the total grant amount, as well as the amount eligible for funding of public service proposals listed on the screen. Per program guidelines, a maximum of 15% of the total funding allocation can be used for those public service programs. Four public service program, public service program applications were received and deemed eligible by the county, all of which were funded last year as well. Those four applicants are Family Service Association of Redlands, Partners Against Violence, the San Bernardino County Library, and the City of Ucaipa's Recreational Scholarship Program. Unfortunately, the Boys and Girls Club was not able to follow through with the grant program for this current year, and did not submit an application to the county for the upcoming year. The four eligible applications total $52,500 in requests. The maximum that can be allocated to the public service programs due to that 15% cap is listed below, and it's that $35,346. There was one construction project submitted, and that was for the Ucaipa Scherer Senior Center. Those were renovations to the flooring, storage rooms, and the workroom located in the nutrition center wing of the facility. You have received the full application details for each proposal in your packets. As a reminder, these proposals will be 100% funded by these grant funds and have no impact on the general fund. That concludes my, my report. Council may wish to hear any speakers, and then it is recommended that council determine which proposals to fund and at which funding level. Staff is available for questions.
Corey, thank you for your presentation. I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
It's okay.
Said Graham. I guess I just assumed. Yeah. For everywhere. All right. We do have public speakers. So, first public speaker, Ms. Robin Holly from the Samory County, regarding the Samory County Library. Second speaker, Ms. Kyra Stewart, Ucaipa Outreach Family Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Robin Holly. I am the Regional Manager for the Ucaipa Branch Library. I would like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the city, to the city for its ongoing support of the Ucaipa Branch Library and its literacy program. The Ucaipa Branch Library offers adult literacy and computer literacy programs to adult community members that struggle with reading and computer literacy. The reading literacy program provides one-on-one tutoring for these adults. The computer literacy classes are offered as one-on-one tutoring or in a class setting. These one-on-one sessions are scheduled to best meet the needs of our learners. On average, we serve over 40 learners each year through our programs. Some of the literacy materials available for the tutors and the learners include literacy adult, adult literacy Launchpad tablets to assist in learning English grammar, spelling, and writing, reading, writing, and spelling books designed for adults, online access to testing and education reference center, job search resources, and online databases. Thank you for your consideration of the ongoing partnership through the CDBG grant for the Ucaipa Branch Library. This partnership makes a difference in our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I pronounce right? Kyra? All right. Ms. Kyra Stewart, Ucaipa Outreach Family Services.
Good evening, and Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City of Ucaipa staff. My name is Kyra Stewart. I am the Executive Director of Family Service Association of Redlands, which is the umbrella organization of the Ucaipa Outreach Project Satellite Office on Fourth Street. We opened that office in 2016 in partnership with the Redlands Community Hospital. They donated that space for us, and it includes a food pantry, clothing room, and case management opportunities. And you guys have been just so incredibly supportive. Thank you for your past, present, and hopefully future support of our work. We, in 2023, were able to provide services to 38 families representing 116 City of Ucaipa individuals. We supported them with wraparound support, case management, and move-in deposits. We paid a total of eight move-in deposits for people who were fighting homelessness, and also a total of 18 months' rent for 11 families who were faced with eviction. We also distributed 270 bags of food, and we paid 112 voucher nights for 11 families who were unhoused at point of intake. So, thank you for your consideration as we continue the fight against hunger and homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyra. All right. Are there any public comments, ma'am? Just the two that we got. Perfect. There's no applicant rebuttal. All right. At this point, I will close the public hearing. The time is 8:08, and we'll move on to council discussion. I'll throw out my numbers and see if anybody thinks like I think. I never profess to be good at math, so let's just keep that clear real quick, okay? It's probably why I became a cop. All right. So if somebody could check my math, we have $35,346 to allocate. There's $52,500 on the board currently, so we need to make some cuts. My recommendation is that we give the City of Ucaipa the $10,000 for the continuation of the recreational scholarship program. We give Family Service Association of Redlands the $7,500 they've asked for. Divide the remaining amount, I believe it's 17...
Are we, are we gonna put that on the board somehow? Put that into a?
We don't even have that. $17,500 is what I have remaining, divided by two for the Partners Against Violence and the Samory County Library, which is $8,750. So, that would be my recommendation, is starting from the top, $7,500 to Family Services Association, number three, Partners Against Violence, $8,750, Samory County Library, $8,750, City of Ucaipa, $10,000, which should total 35,346.
Just to confirm, you said $8,750 for the library and Partners Against Violence, correct?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. That leaves us $346 short.
Mayor, what did you, how much did you give the family services?
The requested amount, $7,500. So... So eight, seven, five. Oh, you're saying there's three hundred and forty-six dollars still on the board? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That was left unallocated.
All right. So then add a hundred and seventy-three to that eight, seventy, eighty-seven, fifty. So eight, nine, two, three?
Eight, nine, I'm sorry, eight, nine, two, three. All right, we're good.
Typically, I would have just said divided by the by the amount of applicants, but that would put family services over the requested amount, which I'm not sure if there's constraints on which they can receive. So just so you can see inside my head. They wanted seventy-five hundred, give them seventy-five hundred, the remain, the other amounts, eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three to Partners Against Violence and San Bernardino County Library, and then ten thousand to the City of Ucaipa. That's a second from Councilman Thorpe.
Don't we normally put that on the board? Where was the disconnect this year?
I'm sorry. I, this is my first year doing this. Next year, I'll make sure to have it up there.
Okay. Well, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I just, I'm just confused right now, so.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, four zero. All right. Trying to, trying to hear the joke. All right. Are there any member of the council that has any business to report?
I need to address something in the beginning of the meeting, I think. So when we did the consent item, number, number one had several minutes. I should have recused myself from number two of number one, because I was not present.
Councilmember, you can certainly note that you weren't present. If you'd like the clerk to note a recusal, that's fine. There's no legal requirement that you recuse yourself from voting on minutes.
I just wanted to be clear.
All right. Thank you. Anything to report, sir?
No.
Anything to report?
Nothing to report. I have a question to Chris Mann. Kathy Sellers made a comment earlier basically saying that go ahead and recall Bobby Duncan. And I just want to put it on the record that, is that, is that true?
Absolutely not. I will point out that there were a number of staff in the room that evening. And if if any member of the council has questions about what was said, I invite you to ask any member that was in that room. I'll be sure to let you know who those are. But there were, as has been typical, a number of mischaracterizations in the Sellers comments. And again, there were at least four members of city staff, perhaps five in in the room that evening, and I invite you to ask any one of them about the comments.
Ms. Sellers.
Can I rebuttal?
Ma'am, no. No, you cannot. We're not doing, because public comment time. Ma'am, this is not the, I'm not even certain that the, stop. We're going to have order in the chambers, okay? The time for public comment has come and gone. I'm not even quite certain that this discussion is even appropriate at the moment, okay? So it's a great question, but I'm not going to answer the question right now. We're going to move on to further council reports outside of direct examination of city staff in a public setting. Does any member of the council have anything else that they wish to report? No? Okay. Mr. City Manager, is there any announcements?
No, sir.
All right. Next city council meeting will be Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. The city council meeting will start promptly at eight, six P M. During the meeting, the time is now eight fourteen.